The Craig Foley Show on Deadline Detroit is made possible in part by Lynette's Shrimp House located in Highland Park. It's Metro Detroit's premier destination, serving juicy fried shrimp, fish and wings alongside soul food sides and new additions to the menu like turkey tacos and desserts. Located at 13548 Woodward in Highland Park just north of the Davison, Lynette's is open for takeaway noon to eight Tuesday and Thursday, noon to 10 p.m. Friday and Saturday and noon to 5 p.m. on Sunday. Call now, get some Lynette's. Hello, everybody. Happy Friday. Welcome to the Craig Foley Show on Deadline Detroit. And it is Friday, which means it's time for another edition of the week that was on Deadline Detroit. And wow, what a week it has been. As usual, I have some wonderful panelists here to help me break down the news of the week. I'd like to welcome, of course, Alan Lengel, who is the editor and co-founder of Deadline Detroit. Alan, welcome back, sir.
Thanks, thanks.
Been a couple of weeks, you know, I missed it. You guys did a great job without me last week. I appreciate it very much. I was up in the U P and had zero internet. So that in itself was a luxury that I have not experienced in quite a while. Also, we have returning Todd Perkins of the Perkins Law Group. Thank you so much for being here once again, sir.
Looking forward to all the hot topics.
There's plenty of them. There's plenty of them. Of course, Joel Sklar, our old friend, is going to be joining us at some point today. He's having a little technical difficulties, but we'll get him in when he gets here and figures that stuff out. But I would like to welcome a first timer to the program, Allison Krieger of the Loren and Krieger Law Firm here in Detroit. Allison, welcome. It's a pleasure to have you here. You and I have talked for many, many months, obviously, and I finally got you to agree to come on here. I hope you do not regret it.
I also hope that, although I am thrilled to think that anybody cares about what I have to say. So thank you, Craig.
Well, that's the beauty of this show because there's a whole lot of people that don't know what they're talking about necessarily, but we've all got opinions on everything. All right. So I have to say, I woke up this morning and I was in a good mood already because I wake up really early, usually early enough to see the sunrise. I go outside on the front porch with my cup of coffee, breathe in this crisp fall air. The sun is rising over the trees for the first time in what seems like a month. Lot of rain, lot of rain. And then I started looking at the news on my phone. And that leads us to our first schmuck of the week. Because we need to talk about this right off the bat. The first news story I read was about Alan's schmuck of the week. So Alan, why don't you fill us in on what happened here?
It is a cyber ninja, which has been doing a audit of the election there in
Maricopa.
Maricopa County, which is Phoenix, Arizona. And after all the hoopla and stuff like that, they have come to the conclusion that Joe Biden won, that the election was legitimate. It's really so tragic what's happening. I mean, we saw the recall where Trump was saying, you know, if Newsom doesn't get recalled, it's only because it's a fixed election. I mean, he is doing everything to sabotage confidence in democracy. And he's been doing a pretty good job because there's still quite a few people out there who believe everything's rigged, the whole election can't be trusted.
But here's the thing, Alan. Not only did he hire this cyber ninjas firm, which had no experience in doing election audits in the past, we've been watching them goof around with this thing for what, nine months now? And they found not only did Biden win, but he actually gained votes after the audit. These guys were handpicked to find a way, any excuse to cast doubt on the results in Arizona. So what's the solution now for Donald Trump? Is it basically to say that cyber ninjas are crooked too? This guy bought into QAnon conspiracy theories, election conspiracy theories, and he still couldn't find a way to justify giving any credence to the arguments that were made against the vote count in that county in Arizona. And I hope everybody else that is considering these election recounts, states like Texas, Pennsylvania are talking about doing this right now. How much did they pay cyber ninjas to do this damn recount? The grift continues. That's all this was. They got a fat government contract, got their name out there to do a bunch of stuff, and still came back with the same freaking result, actually one that's better for Biden. So I'm looking at this thinking to myself, if you are still believing that this election was rigged in some way, what do you have now to suggest that this is real? What do you have now to keep clinging to this belief that somehow this election was stolen? Isn't it possible that your guy lost by a huge margin because he was a crappy president? Todd, what do you think about that?
You froze there a little bit, Craig, but I think that the answer to that question lies somewhere in caring about facts, which I think has never really been a fan favorite of the Trump administration or his supporters. So I think just keep holding on to your version of the truth regardless of what comes out. And that's just it.
Well, the truth doesn't seem to matter. As you say, I mean, it's the truth is irrelevant. It's the message. We see it. You know, I think we got a taste of what it's like to live in a fascist country where truth doesn't matter, where whatever the leader says, people buy into and people have bought into the Trump fascism there, you know?
But you gotta understand, this is the beginning of the ice, you know, like this is like the iceberg stuff. This is what you see up top. The iceberg, just like we know from the Titanic, it's got such a huge base below it. So we're just scraping the surface about the atrocities of protocols, politics, you know, all the things that we talk about on this show that went on in that amped at a time from November, when he lost the election, all the way up until when he left the White House. I mean, let alone what he was doing and what he did during the course of the pandemic and things of that nature, let alone what happened, or let alone what happened throughout his presidency. But again, you know, we're just, I guess, I promise you, over the course of time, and see, here's what happens. And Allison can attest to this as a lawyer, and you all who've covered so much legal stuff, over the course of time, what's beneficial to the Republican regime? And I mean, not all Republicans, but the ones who attach themselves to the regime component, the Nazis and those individuals who I would describe as fascists, the ones who walk around, who I'm still baffled by that one t-shirt that I tell Alan about it when we talk about it, the one the guy had this six M, not enough, or something like that.
Oh, right, right, right.
These are people that are his supporters. So we have just scraped the surface of what kind of things that went on. And this only reason why we're finding out about this is because a government contract was involved. So there's a certain sort of, you know, efficacy that's going to go behind and scrutiny that's going to come, and ability to scrutinize because it's public, because they use public funds. What about the private money and the dark money that's taking place that allowed all this stuff to go on that goes down on, what's that, K Street? What's that place down?
That is K Street, yes.
Yeah, you know, so, you know, it's just, we're just touching, you know, we're just getting rowed.
The scam goes on. I keep getting emails from the Trump camp saying, last chance to become a lifetime member of Trump, whatever. And they are just finding every which way to grift. Companies, the Trump people, everyone's got their hand out trying to figure out how to scam people.
Because he's so wildly successful, right? Just perpetuating lies. And like, there are two lies he's not been able to succeed. One is the election, although he keeps trying. And the other is COVID, right? Although even still, he's managed to convince a lot of people that COVID's not that serious, or the vaccine is, you know, is just like voodoo, even though he and his family all got it themselves, right? So he, you know, it works for him.
Yeah. I mean, the fact that he ended up in the hospital tells you a lot. His wife didn't go to the hospital, his children didn't go to the hospital. He did. And that was the last place he wanted to be, to show that it was a serious virus there. And he had some serious problems in the hospital, but he had such a great, I mean, you go to Walter Reed, you get amazing treatment there.
One thing that you don't hear about is that a source of information about the his treatment, he got the largest or most potent dose of, what was the medicine that they were giving?
Remdesivir?
What did you say?
The monoclonal antibodies?
Right.
Remdesivir, that stuff?
Yeah, he had the most potent dosage known at that time. When he went in, you know, they gave, you know, he had access. And you know, what he used that for was exactly what we knew he would use it for. He's like, ah, you know, it's just a virus. Look, I got over it. And, you know, he wanted to make, you know, but the numbers don't lie. I mean,
no, they certainly do not. I mean, you know, I wanted to get back to this for just a second though, because with the big lie unraveling, and again, if cyber ninjas can't find anything that they can hang their hat on, and in fact, Joe Biden expands his margin there, then you have real problems in making the argument that somehow this election was faulty because there were a lot of people working really, really hard to find some sort of seed of doubt that they could plant about the results there. And even the cyber ninja morons couldn't figure this out. They were looking for bamboo in the paper for proof that votes were coming in from China. I mean, that's who these people were. And I think I froze up again. Oh, there it is. It's back. But you also look at this. I mean, look, this all led to January 6th, right? And now we've got subpoenas that are coming out for a number of people that were involved in this. Stephen Bannon announced on his radio show that he was talking to Trump a couple of days before the election about how to kill the Biden presidency in the crib, is the quote that I read. And also, you now have subpoenas for him, for Dan Scavino, Steve Bannon, and Kash Patel. These are all former Trump staffers who are now going to have to answer questions about their role in setting up January 6th and what led to it. So I think we may be finally getting to the bottom of some of this nonsense. And I think it might be time for somebody to pay.
Well, you know, here's the thing, though. I was saying that, it's just so much to talk about it. I get caught up with.
Of course.
Allison and I, as lawyers, recognize that the beauty of time allows them to use the lapse of time to work on their base. And, you know, people seem, you know, we as Americans, we forget so easily. You give us a check, we'll forget about all that, you know? And it's one of those things, like, over the course of time, you know, now it'll be a year by the time we actually get into real testimony on January 6th. And then they'll say, oh, that's old news, because they're rallying their base. And they're continuing to rally that base. It's just that, you know, when I found out, that base is only about 10 or 12% maybe, less than that, but it's enough to keep the deluge of garbage just continuing to flow. And, you know, people look at taglines and things like that. And, you know, they throw those catchy one liners, you know? I still use a liner that Trump used. I hate to use it. They were grilling him in New York. And he's like, hey, take it nice and easy. You know, those kinds of things that, you know, this is the President of the United States or President-elect, you know, who says these things. And, you know, but to the base, he's championing to a people who feel like they have been neglected. And that's, you know, the white man.
It's hard to be white in America, Todd. These days, it's hard to be a white man in America.
Yes.
We're a very marginalized group.
Yeah, exactly. You know, so, hey.
Well, he has successfully tapped into the whole anti-intellectual thing, where he's told people, I have a gut feeling, this is what we should do. I have a gut feeling the virus is going to go away. I have a gut feeling. And people are like, yeah, I don't need a science degree. I don't need a PhD in microbiology and infectious diseases to have an opinion that matters. And he has really taught people to, you know, stand by what you feel and not what, you know, what the facts are.
It's interesting how that was adopted. Like, I won't mention which jail, but I was talking to a client who was in housing one of the local jails who said, it's really hot in here. And I was like, well, why is it really hot in there? This is during the height of COVID. And it was because the deputies believed that turning the heat up would kill COVID because they were by the president that it'll go away, you know, it goes away with the heat. And it's, hi, Joel, welcome.
Hey.
Joel Sklar has entered the building here.
Hey, now the wheels are about to fall off the bus.
Now the party gets wild.
Well, Joel, we were just, we were chatting, of course, about the fact that cyber ninjas basically came back and said that Biden did win, in fact, increased his margin. They just released their report today. We'll get full details on that. And then talking, of course, about how January 6th has come about, the fact that there are subpoenas that are coming for a bunch of Trump people to find out what they knew about the planning behind January 6th and the COVID response from the president. So, I mean, the former president, the former guy. So, you know, any thoughts on those three? I'm gonna let you catch up right now.
Well, you know, the Trump thing is, you know, it's just the pathology of denial, which will continue for the rest of our lives, completely insane and destructive. COVID, I'm convinced, will also continue for the rest of our lives, also destructive. What was the third thing?
January 6th, well, yes, cyber ninjas.
First of all, cyber ninjas is a great name. Yeah, I don't know how they dress. I assume it's all black and little, you know, quick moves. But that is a great finding that Biden got more votes under their tabulation than the free.
He gained some, and Trump lost additional 200. So.
Correct. And Trump has already moved on to Texas. So, you know, this is a man who doesn't acknowledge reality. He creates his own reality.
Which he won. He won Texas. And this is what I'm trying to understand. And he's like, well, we need a recount in Texas. I'm not exactly sure why. But Greg Abbott, of course, isn't going to say no to Donald Trump. I mean, he's trying to curry favor with these, with the base that Trump has cultivated, because he's thinking about a run for president one of these days, you know?
See, Craig, you're looking at it the wrong way. You gotta look at it, you're looking at these as transactional events.
What, logical? Logically?
No, transactional. What I'm saying is, you know, you're looking at it, why are you looking at, why you won? How much? He wants to show that he won Texas by more, because look what's going on in Texas. They got this abortion thing going on. They got the voting rights thing going on. So this is a ground game from a perspective that if we deal with it in a vacuum and a transactional events, we'll lose. We have to look at it from the perspective, all this is for, for the purposes of just spanning out their footprint. So they're like, we're going to capture this victory here. We're going to capture. It's like when Obama won in 08. What happened in 08? They went, the Republicans had a ground game. They went into the school boards. They went into county commission seats. They went into city council seats, or cities that had a sort of a, not like Detroit where it's predominantly, mostly democratic. But, you know, they went into those areas, state representative houses, and they started working that and working that. And then they went into Congress and working that. And that's what they're doing right now. Because.
This was in 2010.
They're dying.
They poured a ton of money into local races in 2010. Yeah, they swept the nation, the Republicans.
It reminds me, it reminds me when I see this latest audit, when I was on strike at the Detroit News, I got arrested for civil disobedience a couple of times, and I got fired four times. And every time I got fired, one of the editors would see me on the picket line, and he'd go, you are so fired. And so I think of Trump saying to him, you are so fired now. So.
Well, let's hope. But, I mean, you know, getting back to the subpoenas that went out for people like Steve Bannon and such, these Trump enablers. And Steve Bannon, like I said, what a smart guy, because he goes onto his radio shoot two days before the subpoenas are issued, and again, says, I've got a plan to kill the Biden presidency in the crib. Really nice metaphor, by the way, for the pro-life party. But, you know, and it's just.
You're doing though, transactional. Steve Bannon, he doesn't have to answer that subpoena because, as I recall, he's still under indictment, right?
No, no, he was pardoned.
Was he pardoned? Oh, my God.
So, like I said.
It happened to a better guy, you know?
I think his own words may come back to haunt.
Yeah, yeah, his case.
But not, but not.
Okay, let's subpoena the son of a bitch.
But also, nothing is surprising about those statements. Like, in other news, water is wet, right?
Yeah, but, you know, you shouldn't tee it up that high. I mean, you know, this is not a good idea.
They don't care. They don't care.
It's impunity, you know? I mean, that sense of impunity of not being touched or touchable, I think continues. You know, I think there's certainly Bannon, who's, you know, been indicted and then pardoned. To have no fear or no concern is troubling to me. At least the public state is such. I mean, you know, these guys think they're immune from anything. And that's, again, it's a separate reality that we live in.
I got a question for you guys.
All right.
I got a question. Does anybody think that Trump is worried about getting indicted or anything like that? I mean, I just don't know.
I think he is. I think he is. And not necessarily for this kind of stuff, but I think he is a little bit worried about what's going on up in New York.
Yeah, I just don't see.
I think DC has, could put together, US Attorney's Office can put together a pretty convincing case that not only did he help incite the riot, but then neglect of, willful neglect of duty or whatever, did not do anything for hours as they rioted, when he had some levers that he could have pulled to stop the violence. And, you know.
I always thought the feds wouldn't want to use the capital that comes with an indictment and that we'd leave it to the states. But I could be wrong about that.
I didn't hear what you said.
She doesn't.
He's still smart.
I didn't think the feds would want to use the capital involved with an indictment, and particularly because it's such a divisive time. But, and so I was really relying on New York or some other state to indict, to charge him. But I could be wrong about that.
There is never a good time to think about doing something like that. I mean, it's going to be seen as political, no matter what you do. But if the guy broke the law, you should at least make him answer for it in some capacity, even if he gets off. I mean, at least make him uncomfortable. Look, the Republicans did that to Bill Clinton, did they not?
Well, yeah, you're right. And, but I.
So, you know, there's never a good time to do it.
Yeah, but in New York, they dislike Trump. That's the good thing about it, you know?
Probably moved out.
And I didn't realize that until he got elected, how much New Yorkers disliked him, you know? So for him to get indicted there, that'd be a real wonderful.
I mean, come on.
Think about the jury call.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, he's sort of like the Matty Maroon of New York, you know? Everybody loves a slumlord. So it's just sort of, you know, that doesn't go over too well. All right, okay, we've spent a lot of time on this. We do need to move on. But COVID was mentioned. Mike Duggan up on Mackinac Island this week mentioned that he's expecting a pretty big surge in the city of Detroit to be coming here. He says, he says, quote, I think we've got a major wave coming over the next two to three months. And so they're trying to get people vaccinated here in the city. We're still struggling with that. But I mean, this is going to be with us for a long time, as Joel mentioned just a couple of minutes ago. At this point in time, we're still struggling to get people to get their first shots. And also talking about getting boosters for seniors and those with compromised immune systems. Looking at the way that we're dealing with this, is this just going to be something that is with us for a decade more? Or will we ever be able to figure this out?
I think we're, I think we're in, it's going to be an endemic. I think with so many people resisting all the, you know, besides the social distancing and the masks and stuff like that, the vaccination rate is still low. There's such a resistance, including in the healthcare field, where you're seeing some doctors and nurses who are, you know, I was doing physical therapy at Ford Hospital, and my physical therapist was telling me that some of the people at Ford are going to quit because they won't take the vaccine. We're seeing it. And it leaves open the possibility of the variants being housed and evolving and, you know, and the travel we have these days. I mean, we wonder how in Bay City, we have a South African virus, and now we have this and that. I mean, it's just, it's just not going to be contained. The best that we can hope for is that there's a lot of good treatments for it. And those who want a vaccine, there's effective vaccines. And the rest, I think the insurance company should cut off people, make them pay for their treatment in the hospital if they're not vaccinated.
That's going to be a tough one.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about that. I'll have to think about that one. But I think the biggest failures, though.
It makes logical sense, you know, because, you know, but here's the thing, and I hate to go back, Craig.
Hold on a second. I'm gonna let Allison finish her thought, then we'll go to you, Todd.
So I think one of the biggest failures was not explaining to people why we got a vaccine so quickly, right? Like, there was, you know, this messaging in the beginning, oh, it takes 18 months to two years, that we're going to be in this for 18 months to two years. And then all of a sudden, it was much quicker than that. And the real reason is because we had made so many advancements on like the evolution of RNA virus, RNA vaccines, that all we had to do, as I understand it in my non-professional medical, is isolate a piece of the vaccine and then, you know, get it out to people. But that's really not been explained. So everyone's like, oh, this isn't safe, or I need to wait and see, or there's something wrong with this, or maybe it's not real, or it's a hoax, or it's a way for, you know, Bill Gates to make money. And if we could just educate people around this, like particularly when people have, you know, hesitancy around medical treatment and science generally, that we would be in a much better position. If not encourage that, then I think we're going to be in this forever.
Todd, go ahead. I mean, Todd, then Joel.
Thank you. You know, but more to the point, you've mentioned this before, Craig, is that, you know, we had these anti-vaxxers already, and it just gave them a platform to increase their, their ability to make people afraid of vaccines. And then secondly, this continued, I hate to go back in our stories, but this is sort of the Trump platform that created this and allow, and it exponentially increased of the fear and the lack of information, just like what Allison explained to us so clearly. If we understood that and people were told that as it was being made, I think it would be substantially more people who would be willing to get the vaccine, you know? And some of them are reasonable people, I think, you know, who just are afraid to get it. And but that's not been explained to them.
Well, this brings me to Joel Sklar, though, because, you know, we normally do schmucks of the week at the end of the show. But if it fits with what we're talking about, schmucks of the week go in the middle of the show. Joel's got his schmuck of the week related to this very issue.
My schmuck of the week is Tyler Bertuzzi. You know, the guy plays for the Wings.
Detroit Red Wings.
Right, makes a whole bunch of cash, and has decided for personal choice, quote unquote, not to get the vaccine, which means he can't go to Canada. It's hockey. You play the Leafs. You play the Canadians, you know? You may play Edmonton. I mean, you gotta go to Canada. And he's willing to give up $400,000 of his salary because he ain't going to get paid for the time he doesn't play or go to Canada. And it's insane. And it goes back to education. You know, the question is, who do you believe, what source of knowledge is going to educate you? And we have a third of the country, maybe more, who, you know, whose source of information isn't based on science, it isn't based on fact, it's based on ideology. You know, just this willingness not to accept the reality of what science dictates. And that's, that's the power we're going to have. We can educate people, but people are going to be suspicious of anything the CDC says. Forty percent, 30% will be suspicious of anything that Biden says. And they're going to stick to Tucker Carlson and would be, you know, the insanity of, it's my personal choice, for that reason alone, I'm not doing it. And so education, I just don't see how we get out of this until we get out of this rut of this polarity that we have, you know, that there are two stark sides. And until we can get beyond that craziness, that immaturity, you know, that refusal to see something, take a step back and see really what's going on, we're doomed. I mean, you know, you need, this is the type of thing where everybody's got to act together. And we all got to get vaccinated.
We're in a country where even, you know, for a while, it sort of keeps changing its fluid. But people who wore masks, you know, you sort of, early on, you said, it must be a Democrat. People who weren't wearing masks, it must be a Republican.
I think that's still true.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's crazy.
You know, I, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, we have to sort of ascend that craziness. And like you say, once, once it gets down, I mean, it's so, the political mess there. And even Trump has sort of unleashed the Frankenstein there, where he was at a rally, and he said, well, I think you should get the COVID, and people were booing. Get the COVID shot, and people were booing him. So.
Well, you know, here's the thing. Trump had an opportunity to actually take credit for the development of this vaccine, even if he wasn't directly involved. But he called it Operation Warp Speed, which may have, you know, basically to the point that Allison was making earlier, screwed things up by people thinking that this was rushed, rather than the fact that mRNA vaccine research has been going on for over a decade now, at least a couple of decades, albeit for other diseases. But he could have said, look, this is the, I let loose, you know, everything we needed to get this to the market quickly and to make sure that you got that shot in your arms, and you should go get it because it works. And it's because we have the best scientists in the world, and we're working with the most money, and we're going to get it to everybody fast because we're America. He could have done that. And you'd have people cheering and all that kind of stuff. But he didn't do it. And he blew an opportunity to actually have one part of his legacy not be tainted.
Well, you know, his purpose isn't to unite us, to divide. And so for what he's trying to do is keep this madness of anger that is culpable, you know, among the parties. You know, when I went to Westport instead of go shopping, I wore a mask. I got some really mean looks from people, you know? Keep it warm. And it's like, you know, I don't understand why everybody's not wearing a mask. I went to a hearing in McComb County a month ago. I'm the only guy in the room of 20 people in a closed conference room wearing a mask. I'm thinking, what in the hell is wrong with you people?
Well, if somebody looks at you funny, just tell them you got tuberculosis and see how they react.
I went to a fundraiser, I went to a fundraiser last night on Castle Lake at this huge house. I walk in, it was for a dog, you know, dog rescue. And I walk in with the mask. There's about 30 people in the living room, and no one is wearing a mask. And they all look up at me like either I'm about to rob the place, or like, what am I, what message am I sending?
You're a surgeon.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thought you were going to tell me you were at the Anthony, at an Anthony Adams fundraiser last night or something like that. So, all right. Okay, let's, let's switch topics off of COVID, because I'll tell you what, we've talked about that every week for the last year and a half. And you still have to, because there's dumb stuff going on around it. But I also wanted to make sure Joel got a chance to get his schmuck of the week in. I like the Tyler Bertuzzi. He's the only red wing that has not gotten it. And, you know, Iserman's just like, nothing I can do about it, except cut his pay. And the guy doesn't seem to care. Maybe that's a sign.
I love Iserman, like thinly veiled, basically, like, my family has it. I have it. We believe in science, but I can't force him to believe in science.
No, you certainly cannot.
Bertuzzi's tenure on the Wings is going to end this year.
Did Cam Newton get vaccinated?
I don't think he's got a contract anywhere, does he?
What I'm saying, you know, that's one of the reasons. I mean, you know, they, they get him out of there. Well, he, he fell in, I think, into a trap where he's not vaccinated. And then he had to go into the protocol, you know, into the COVID protocol. And so. he's not vaccinated and then he had to go into the protocol, you know, into the, um, uh, the COVID protocol. And so, you know, you're not, and you're supposed to be leading the team and.
Well, the NFL basically said, if your team has a COVID outbreak because you don't have somebody, then your team forfeits and everybody doesn't get paid. So guarantee that there's no team that is going to take that risk if it means they forfeit a game, uh, that keeps them out of the playoffs and loses them that much revenue. So, you know, that's, that's one approach that they can take. But when you only have 16 games or 17 games like the NFL, it's a lot different than having 80 something that the NBA and NHL do. I mean, because it's nine games that Bertuzzi is going to potentially miss as a result of this. So we'll see, but it could be more if he gets the thing.
You know, but by some miracle.
Playoffs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're playing the Leafs.
A friend of mine, when I was at the Washington Post, he wrote a book, Alan Sipas wrote a book about the bird flu. And it was 2009 and he painted this horrific scary scenario of this virus just destroying the world. And I thought, this is just so science fiction, like this is never going to happen. I don't even want to read, go further in the book and here it is.
There you go. All right. Uh, I mentioned Anthony Adams just a second ago. He had a press conference, uh, was it yesterday that he had the press conference?
Yeah.
Um, talking about, uh, the fact that Mayor Duggan does not want to debate him. Uh, he had a cardboard cutout of, of Mike Duggan that may or may not have been life size, um, wearing an Anthony Adams T-shirt. But I'll tell you what, the interesting thing about this, this tiff between, uh, Mayor Duggan and Anthony Adams, his opponent in the mayoral race here, is that it seems to be not so much between Mayor Duggan and Anthony Adams, but Mayor Duggan's campaign chair, Alexis Wiley and Anthony Adams seem to be the two that are brawling over this kind of thing. And apparently what set it off is, uh, what Alexis Wiley deemed to be a sexist tweet from Anthony Adams about, uh, you know, Mike Duggan hiding behind the skirt of his campaign chair, which he's, you know, she took, she took offense at that yesterday. That seems to be why we're not going to be getting a debate this time around. Uh, Alan, I've sent out emails about this to a couple of different people, hoping that we could get the candidates together. I have yet to receive a response. I'm not expecting to anytime soon. But, you know, I know you guys talked about this last week, but it now seems as if both parties are digging in their heels a little bit.
I, I, I think it's unfortunate because at least there should be at least one debate where as Detroiters, we have some idea what really matters to the candidates. And we're not really hearing, well, look, when Coleman Young, Jr., the second ran, uh, four years ago, he didn't have a chance, but he stirred it up and he was taking punches at Duggan and he forced Duggan to address some of the issues and one of the biggest issues being, uh, the development of neighborhoods. And Duggan did quite a bit to address that, and it's still an issue that resonates. And this year, we don't hear, you know, Anthony Adams, I mean, he says, you know, he's just, I mean, I give him credit for doing what he did yesterday. That's the type of thing that you need to do. You need to have a little theatric, you need some theatrics there to get it going, to get the press interested. You just can't come out and say these dull little things here, but a, a, a debate is a perfect place to bring out the issues and Duggan, Duggan's so far ahead. I mean, Duggan's going to win by at least 70%, if not 80%. And he's really marginalized Anthony Adams so far, and that's his strategy apparently.
I mean, we forget that Duggan won a write-in campaign with a candidate mayor, like, uh, Dugan on the ballot, right? Mike Dugan or whatever his name was, one gene. And he's in a slightly different position now than he was then, but like, he's still very popular. I, I'm a little sick with the theatrics. I think the optics of Mike Duggan not debating Anthony Adams aren't great. But he's made.
What's his upside as far as Duggan's concerned? You know, he's taking all risks. What, what, he's, he doesn't need a debate to win.
And not only that, him not debating.
It's tradition.
But him not debating, not tradition, but he's like, look, you guys can hurt me for that. Take, take 10 points off my thing. It still doesn't even get Anthony Adams in the ballpark, you know? So it's, you know, I, I, I don't, you know, one thing about Duggan is he's very, um,
He's savvy.
And focus driven on, on, on cause events, like the cause event right now is getting reelected. And, you know, just like a couple of months ago, the cause event was making sure their proposal P didn't pass. You know, he does what needs to be done from a strategy perspective and, you know, addressing him, he's using the Alexis Wiley gaffe by Anthony Adams as a basis of saying, you know, I don't even need, you know, like what your, what your parents say or used to say, somebody said something that doesn't even deserve a response. He doesn't even deserve to debate me right now. And, you know, for that matter, you know, Anthony Adams hasn't done, you know, if you ever saw the polls, the polls say that, you know, Duggan's winning by substantial margins, historically substantial margins. But more importantly, most people don't even know who Anthony Adams is. You know, and, and that's the problem. And that's his fault. Cause if nothing else, he hasn't given people the, the mantra or the imagery of Anthony Adams to even consider against a, a Duggan who has been successful in so many different ways.
He's run, he's run a poor campaign. I mean, he should have been at it two years ago, starting. He's jumping in, he's jumped in way too late. He doesn't have the money. Uh, and Duggan's just, like I said, Duggan's doing everything to marginalize him. He's doing a pretty good job of it.
Well, I mean, the, the interesting thing to me is it doesn't even feel like we're in an election season in Detroit right now at all.
It seems like election for city council members, but not a mayor.
Kind, kind of though. I mean, there are other things that are overshadowing that that we'll get to in just a second, but, I mean, there's like a couple of close races in council. Um, D4 is looking like that's going to be kind of interesting, but you know, the mayor's race just seems like a foregone conclusion. And I don't see a whole lot of people out on the street clamoring for these debates to happen or anything. So, I mean, they, they want, they just want some, some stuff to work in the city. I, I, I've spent a lot of time in the neighborhoods in the city of Detroit, talking to people about what bugs them. And if they see some progress, they're going to keep, they're going to keep going with the person that's fixing something, even if it's not everything, but if they see some progress.
All the, all the big guys, all, all the mahrs, as they say in Yiddish, are, are backing Duggan. That's where the money's at. So, Anthony Adams has to do a really a true grassroots campaign and he's like way too late in the game.
Well, and I don't know that he's got that game because when he worked, when he was with Kwame, Kwame was the guy that was getting all that cash. So, you know, you just had to have a couple of fundraisers and, I'm serious, the business cash was lining up behind Kwame Kilpatrick, uh, in those races he was in. And so again, the fundraisers that Duggan is hosting for his campaign are exactly what Kwame and Anthony Adams got to deal with when he was deputy mayor. He's never had to run a true grassroots campaign.
But it's two things. One, it's diff, it's a different thing to say I'm running for mayor and actually put in the work to run for mayor. I think more to Alan's point. But, but number two, um, you know, Duggan put the nail in the coffin when he starts putting up the billboards. He got 5,000 jobs. He's handing out money for rent abatement. I mean, he's doing the things that a leader is supposed to do. And, you know, I, I, I give credit where credit's due. I'm not, I've never really been a fan, but at the same time, the guy has been effective. You know what I'm saying? I, I just, you know, I can't discount his effectiveness in areas that he's focused in on. I do think he's forgotten the neighborhoods in, in some respect, but he's focused, the things he's, the things he's focused on, he's been immensely successful.
Look, he's the smartest mayor that I think we've had since Coleman Young. He's a big city mayor. He understands how to work the council. Tells council members, look, you don't, you don't get on board with my agenda. I'll find someone to run against you.
Oh, he's like an everyday politician for sure.
Or, or he goes out and asks the FBI to indict you, you know?
Yeah, well, all right, all right. Hey, well, you know, look.
That was the same way into what you were.
I, I, I was, I was reluctant to even bring up this segment in the conversation just because I figured that all the people who are on the screen right now, with the exception of Alan and I, might not be able to comment at all because of some sort of involvement in, in the cases. But we're, we're learning a little bit more about the probe into, uh, the city council, a couple of sitting city council members right now. And what that probe is looking at, uh, and Alan, I, I, like I said, nobody has to comment on this if they are comp, I don't want to say compromised. That's not the word I'm looking for. Uh, it would be a conflict of interest perhaps for some of you to potentially comment on this. And I don't know who's representing who. So, if you want to comment on it, feel free. If you don't, just stay quiet. But Alan, I mean, oh, go ahead, Todd.
If I could just say, that was just a joke. I, I, I don't think that Duggan had anything to do with it at all. I don't want to put him, that's, we're just having fun. But what I didn't like is that being a lawyer that Duggan is, I, I just don't think he should have said, made the comments that he said the day that he, you know, but he wanted to separate himself. But one more thing I do want to say positive about Doug. Duggan, Anthony Adams is running from Kwame Kilpatrick. Duggan is running to him. You know what I'm saying? So that to me wins a lot with, you know, like, you know, you, you, we've got this love hate relationship between, you know, and I don't even know like that. But he, that's just how he is, you know? I just don't think he should have said that on the day that it happened, but no, I would, he has nothing to do with it. I don't believe or anything like that. So.
Well, uh, you know, getting, getting back to this city council stuff, I mean, what it looks like, Alan, is that they're looking at some of these, uh, dark money groups, um, and PACs and things that are going into, you know, defeat various proposals and things. And, you know, a lot of these, you don't, you can't trace where this money is coming from. You can't trace, who is trying to influence whom, uh, on different votes and, and get people to work against certain things that, that voters might want or not want to do. Is it time to start taking a look at some of these organizations that are raising money for candidates for issues against issues? Because it, it seems to me that this is something that has been exploited for too long. And we need to start putting some sunshine on some of these groups.
I, I, I agree. I mean, it's, you know, the, the dark money has, has been out there for so long and, and it's, it's dangerous and it's corrupting. And, and people who are having financial problems, they can find ways to, to have their hand out. And, and what we're seeing now is that these council members are, you know, it's, we, we, what we're seeing on the council, I mean, we have Spivey who's going to plead guilty on, on the 28th. That'll, that'll leave another empty seat. We've got Gabe Leland, uh, who's already pleaded guilty and is gone. We've got two members, two more members who are under FBI investigation and who knows if anyone else gets dragged into that. We've, it's, it's, it's a disgrace. It's not the first time we've had a council that's been in shambles like this, but there's something, when, when you see a pattern like this, when you see openings like this where there's corruption. And, and it's not, it's, you know, we're talking out of nine members of, of council, four, you know, two are already uh, essentially convicted felons and, and two, who knows what, but we've got a big problem there with council.
Leland, Leland did not, was it a felony that Leland?
It was a felony. It was a felony. He got a state charge, a lesser charge and bribery. He should have, he should have done some time for, for the actual original charge, but there was some problems with the case.
Steve Fishman would disagree with you, but, uh.
Well. Problems with their witness, that guy.
Bob Carmack was, it was a problem with him. And so I think they just decided to, to punt the case over to state court and let him sort of get away with quite, quite a bit there, bud. It was really bri, it was bribery. He was charged with bribery and, you know.
Well, interestingly enough, Janaye Ayers, uh, who is, is one of the people that is allegedly under investigation, um, you know, is now slipping in the polls. It's having an impact on the race. Which is why, you know, I can see why people would be reluctant to sort of try these things and, and bring these sorts of, you know, investigations to the fore, in an election cycle. It, it, it makes a difference and it could cost her her seat on the council whether she's, uh, guilty of anything or not. Um, so.
Well, you know, the Justice Department has a, I don't know if it's an unspoken policy or whatever, they try not to do anything within a 60-day period. I think these raids came like 63 days or something before, but does it really matter? 63 days, 60 days? Obviously it has an impact. The question is, why did they do that? Did, were they, did they want to stop something? Did they hear something on a wiretap where somebody said, the feds are on to this, you better get rid of your, you know, laptop or whatever? We don't know, but, but it's, it's unfortunate. It may be, you know, on, on the other hand, look, if they get indicted in December, some of the voters will say, why didn't you tell us beforehand that these guys were, were, were crooked? So.
We'll see. All right. Let, let's move on. Um, I, I do want to talk a little bit about, uh, the Mackinac Policy Conference, which just wrapped up. I did not go this year. I, I normally go to that conference and cover it because for me, as somebody who interviews people, it's like shooting fish in a barrel. I have all the people that I would like to interview and I get them one place and I can knock these things out in a, in a three-day period and have like three weeks worth of shows, which is always wonderful. Um, so there's value in it for me. Now, if you read Deadline Detroit at all, you know that my, uh, colleague there, Charlie Leduff, disagrees wholeheartedly with my position on this and has written a couple of scathing columns about the Mackinac Conference being nothing but a trough that is waiting for the many, many business and political pigs that are going to come to it. Has anybody here, raise your hand if you've been to this conference before? Allison has been there.
I've been.
And, and okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with you. Did you find value in it or did it seem just like a fun junket?
Uh, I did find value in it, but I also, this is, before I went to law school, I worked for, at the time, State Senator Buzz Thomas. And he was very shrewd. He was great on policy, um, great on politics, and I don't have enough nice things to say about him. But he used Mackinac in the way that it was supposed to be used is, um, worthwhile. I, I think some good can come out of Mackinac, but I think it's about the follow-up, right? But, um, that you have to, you, you have all these discussions. If that's what you want to get out of it, right? And some people may just go for the party, but I think people who know what they're doing, like for example, Senator Thomas, who really wanted to make a difference um, and make change and be effective, use it in, in just that way and, and knew how to follow up after. But that's what it's really about, I think.
I, I have spent some time with Buzz Thomas up on Mackinac and I actually, I've actually known him since we were probably in our teens, but, um, interesting. You know, for me, I, I think the optics of it can be bad for sure. Because if you look at the setup that, uh, you know, Detroit Public Television has up there, they're right in the main room where they set up this giant bar and there's always like an ice shot louge right behind the camera. So people are just taking vodka shots and picking up desserts and chowing down on all this fancy stuff while they're interviewing people.
No, that's something I never saw.
Well, like I said, I, it was, it's right there. I mean, I've, I've, I've been that, I've had that as my backdrop while I was doing analysis on channel 56. I mean, you know, and there's people behind you just doing vodka shots, uh, from the sponsored by kettle one thing or whatever. And it's just, yeah, the optics can look kind of bad.
I think what, I think one of the criticisms, Charlie, is sort of, uh, portraying it as sort of a, a bougie fest where, and, and that the media is part of the bougie fest and that if, if they become too intertwined with all the, the muckety mucks, that they have a harder time stepping back and, and looking objectively and reporting and, and being critical. Uh, I think that's one of his things. And I, you know, look, it's, it's, it's a mixed bag. I mean, you go to those things and, and as a reporter, you can make great contacts, you can make great sources. Uh, on, on the other hand, you know.
Overhear a lot of stuff.
Yeah, you can overhear a lot of stuff. You can get good tips and, you know, look, as a, a good reporter is, you know, back in the old days, we don't see it as much as, you know, it's, it's about sourcing, it's about contacts, it's about having the inside information, understanding and putting context to the stories that you write and not being an outsider, but there's the other opposite end of being too much of an insider. So.
Well, I, I think Nancy Caffrey made a great point in my interview with her yesterday, which is on DeadlineDetroit.com. She sort of was my correspondent for the week up there. And she said, look, would you prefer that we weren't up here keeping tabs on what they're doing? Because I thought that was a pretty good point that she had to make there. I mean, look, I didn't go this year and, and, you know, it was just kind of a strange year, obviously, but, you know, I still was keeping tabs, watching some of the panels to see if any interesting ideas came out of there. And it was a little light this year. It just, it was because I think, you know, half the people weren't there. You didn't have the legislature up there at all because they're still finalizing the budget. So I don't know if we got as much out of it this fall, but, um, I have a feeling that it'll come roaring back in the spring. So I guess we'll leave that one right there. How about that? Hey, I'd have a chance to talk about this. Look, Joe Biden's got a tough week, um, right now. He's, he's getting hammered on a couple of things. His domestic agenda is struggling, shall we say? Uh, he's trying to cobble together the votes to get, uh, both of these packages through and he's just been given, um, the responsibility of dealing with this massive influx of, of Haitian refugees at the southern border. Which of course, you know, people are going to make political hay out of that, but this is turning into a really, really bad situation with groups of thousands of people who have somehow found their way into Brazil and then coming up through Mexico, Central America and Mexico, ending up at the southern border. He's been sending a lot of them back. They've got the, the, uh, images of the cowboys out there on their horses, like rounding people up in the desert. This is kind of an ugly humanitarian crisis we've got. I mean, and Haiti is nothing other than a humanitarian crisis on a daily basis, it seems. I, I'm not sure what he should do. And Joel, I mean, you know, this is one of those things, there are no good solutions here.
No, there are none, you know, and you see the, the refugees under that highway.
It reminds me of the Cuban boat lift back in, uh, you know, back in the, in the early eighties.
You know, which is a fair analogy, you know, but I think they're, they're, I, I don't think these, uh, are, are rapists and criminals as, you know, as Trump is, you know, well, well, same than every ever grid has. Um, these are people trying to escape a hell, you know, and there was a time where this country would accept people trying to escape, uh, escape a hell. Uh, it's a humanitarian crisis and we should be a compassionate nation. Uh, we should treat these people with dignity and respect. Having been chased on horses, being whipped by people on patrol i- is an end, you know, is an anathema to what we should be. And so it, there is no good solution. My, again, and I'm a progressive, is to embrace them, um, to find places for them, to process them in a way that is safe, that maintains their health and allows them to. have aspirations of, of coming here to create a new life, because the life in Haiti is no life at all. We've seen them decimated by, you know, catastrophe after catastrophe. And coming here, at least in their mind, is a alternative that matters, and I think it should be. And I think it's, it's an awful situation, but we need to deal with it, and I think we need to embrace these people. I think we need to comfort these people. These are children, they're lost, they're found here, and we have to do something to help them. So I'm not one for sending them back, I'm one to, to help them find a place.
I, I would agree. I mean, and, and I, I just don't know what the answer is. I mean, uh, you know, we need facilities, we need to build nice facilities. Um, cages do not work, you know? You can't just have people sleeping in chairs at a stadium. I mean, they've got to figure something out, and certainly not in a freeway underpass.
The op, the optics are horrible. The optics of all the immigration is just horrible.
But, you know, the imagery for Joe Biden is, you see these, uh, um, um, reserves, or not reserves, but the Border Patrol on horses, you know, with this black guy, and you know, just imagine, you know, what, I can imagine what his other side or his opposition's gonna do with those photos. Oh, you think that he's, uh, he's down with, uh, the racial cause, this is what he's doing. I mean, they'll take that and use it in other ways and malign what is, I mean, right now, that's the policy in place, that's what they're doing. I don't necessarily agree with it, but we haven't come up with what to do with people who are, are coming through the borders. I mean, you know, by, if we're supposed to be reaching out to other countries and, you know, we always want to influence other countries overseas, why aren't we doing things and more in these countries that are more proximate to us, um, from a, uh, from a diplomatic perspective, or infusions of capital? We, we've been doing that overseas because of other reasons, um...
You know, what, what are the, just, just, like, what, just one insight is, you know, our, our view toward immigrants is so tainted and so poisoned, um, you know, but especially by the last, you know, by the, by the Republicans, by the Trump campaign, um, that a large portion of the country sees every immigrant as a very bad, not even a human, it's maybe subhuman, just a bad thing. And, and that, that scares me, you know, there's like a systemic, um, it's like...
It's only immigrants from shithole countries.
But it's, it's really non-white immigrants.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
No. Not, you know, and it's not from Europe, and so, so it comes from a place of racism, uh, you know, i- it's just, again, this is one of those attracical issues where you got a third or 40% of the country, maybe more, who, who just demonize any immigrant, especially if they're of color, um, you know, are just unwilling to bend or to acknowledge that these are human beings escaping a god-awful situation. And what would we do if we were in their shoes? What would Jesus do? Is that, you know, what would we do as, if, if we're, as a nation?
Regular Jesus or Republican Jesus, Joel?
I'm talking regular Jesus. I'm talking just your regular basic Jesus.
When, when Texas lost power, Ted Cruz went from Texas to, to Mexico, like, went to vacation in Mexico.
They should have refused him at the border.
You understand what it's like to cross the border when his family is in distress?
Yeah, they should have just...
They should have put him in a cage for a little while and said, "No, you gotta wait here till you're clear." Uh, but, you know, add COVID into the mix, though, and, and people are using that as an excuse to, to oppose Afghan refugees, Haitian refugees, saying, "Oh, we can't have them, they're gonna bring COVID." I'm sorry, we've done a pretty darn good job of spreading COVID ourselves, everybody. It's not the immigrants that are causing the problem, it's already here.
And my guess is if there was requirement for an immigrant to get a shot, a vaccine as a condition of being here, you wouldn't really have much of an argument.
Hundred percent, you'd have a hundred percent, for sure.
Right.
Hey, real quick, real quick, uh, are the Republicans actually going to, um, not raise the debt ceiling here and try to shut down the economy? Is that, are they actually gonna try it?
I don't...
Did they lose it last time? Wasn't this a really bad thing they tried a few years ago that got really, you know, that they, they lose the house? I mean, I thought there were some really bad things that happened, and I, I, I didn't think it was well-received a couple of years ago.
A couple of years ago and a few years before that, like, it's happened a couple of times.
Well, they shut it down in the Clinton administration, they shut it down once in the Obama administration, and I, yeah, um, this would be the third time, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, it's never worked out well for them, shutting down the government or frankly...
And there was success in spending on the Trump.
Then defaulting on the debt ceiling would be really, really stupid.
Catastrophic for the economy. You know, it's the hypocrisy, again, it's Mitch McConnell was my other second schmuck of the week. It's just this base, this hypocrisy, you know, this just blatant, clear hypocrisy that when my guy's in power, all is good, spending is fine. When they're not, to hell with you. And it's just Mitch McConnell trying to make sure Biden or his, whoever follows him doesn't get another term. You know, it's his to make this presidency fail.
I think next week, we're gonna have some time to talk a little bit more about, uh, Biden's plans and, and whether or not these things are gonna pass, because a lot of that stuff's gonna happen this week. Um, so the week that was next week, we'll likely deal with a little bit more of the political fallout that Biden is dealing with right now. But you mentioned schmuck of the week, and so now, we're actually gonna spend some time talking about the remaining, the remaining schmucks of the week. So I believe, um, who did we have? We had Joel's already, we had Alan's at the very beginning of the show.
I have another one, I have another one.
That's, that's, I'll give you an opportunity. Uh, so why don't we go to Todd Perkins for his schmuck of the week?
Okay. My schmuck of the week is, is, and will probably be, to the extent I am, I'm blessed with the ability to come on in future weeks, uh, will be Gina Avery Walker. Oh, Gina Avery Walker is the Director of Elections in the City of Detroit, and I am, um, involved in a, a social welfare organization called The People's Voice that wanted, that has put a proposal S on the ballot for the November general election. Let me explain. Gina Avery Walker validates the signatures that allow the, the petitions to go to city council and ultimately be voted on by the Election Commission and be placed on the ballot. She validated those signatures. What's interesting in validating those signatures for referendums of legislation is different than a petition for somebody running for office. Every sheet has to have an affidavit, and because there's so much on the front of the sheet, we had to put the affidavit on the back sheet. And so she filed an app, she, she validated the signatures, sent the letter saying the signatures were sufficient and validated. Therefore, you have to assume that she looked at the affidavit on each one of those sheets to validate the signature. So when the court case comes up, because the Election Commission threw the, threw this petition off the ballot, she files an affidavit and says that the sheet, the petitions are one sheet, and, and therefore it doesn't explain to the Election Commission what affected legislation, what, what effect this wording would have on the charter, what portion of the charter. And, and, and interesting enough, the affidavit's on the back, about three inches above that is the actual section of the charter. So you can't say it has one sheet in one side. She actually makes a copy of one of the ref, of the sheets, and she says that the, and then makes a copy of the back sheet, claiming that it's blank, until Judge Kenny looks at all of the sheets and recognizes they all have backs. So her day, you know, her days are coming, and what she's going to have to answer to this, whether she is under oath or not, or whether she takes the fifth, because after that, I, because it's a, you know, the same thing that happened to Kwame Kilpatrick should happen to her, you know, because these are, these are tactics that they don't typically prosecute, but since now there's a precedent for doing it, I think no better way to start than in that office, because what I'm interested in is not, we know what she did, we know that she did something that's a lie. I just want to know why. Who told you to do that? That's what the evidentiary hearing is about. That's what I want to get down to.
The gauntlet has been thrown down. Yeah. Court of public opinion. There we go. All right, Todd Perkins, we'll follow up on that one for sure. Um, let's see, Allison, who do you have?
I have, and not to, to raise an old issue, but I have Joseph, Dr. Joseph Ladapo, who is the new Surgeon General, uh, of the state of Florida, and according to, uh, Governor DeSantis, Joe, quote, "Joe is just the right guy for the job." And Dr. Joe, although I've not seen, um, his diploma from medical school, but opposes mandates, he, um, mask mandates, he says that the COVID vaccine is, quote, "Nothing special."
Because it's not a hundred percent effective, yes. Go ahead, keep, keep going, I'm sorry.
Uh, so he is, in fact, my schmuck of the week.
I think that's a good one. Basically, Ron DeSantis found basically a puppet, um, who will back him up, a quote a...
You're a puppet. You're a puppet, sir.
That's, well, that's exactly right. Um, Alan, you said you had another one?
Uh, Joe Manchin.
Ah, yeah.
It just drives, it drives me crazy that he has become such a prominent senator, and he is just such a, a marginal senator who, and who has, is, is being, you know, so many special interest groups, and he's pretending to be the conscience of the Senate when in fact there's all these reports about all these special interest groups and energy groups that are tugging at his, you know, trousers, trying to get him to, you know, go against, uh, the Democratic agenda. I think the Democrats at some point have to just cut him loose and say, "Look, we have to accept, he's not one of, he's not on our side here." He's, he's just very disengaged.
They do that, though, they're gonna lose his vote on some other stuff. I get that, but, you know, everybody knows that coal is in his back pocket. I mean, there's no way that, that he's gonna spend a bunch of home, you know, a whole bunch of money on alternative energy production, even though every utility in the country is moving in that direction and is reducing their coal capacity. He can cling to this dream of a coal, clean coal future as long as he wants, but it's not coming back, Joe, it's not. And therefore, you are a schmuck for burying your head in the sand or looking to the past, one of the two. I would agree with Alan Lengel on that one. All right, I've got a couple here. Uh, my first one is Kaylee McEnany. Uh, you all remember good Kaylee? So she puts up a post yesterday, uh, on Twitter, and she, she basically said, "Look, this is Joe Biden's America," and it's a graph showing a spike in murders. Now, what the, what the thing showed was a spike in murders in the year 2020. Now, if we all remember correctly, yes, Joe Biden was elected in 2020, he didn't take office till 2021. So she's trying to blame a spike in murders in 2020 on a guy who was not yet president. It was pointed out to her immediately with thousands and thousands of people saying, "You're a moron, check this out." Uh, she pulled it down, but of course, it lives on because everything on the internet is available. So Kaylee, uh, I hope you learned your lesson. Um, yeah, that's on your guy, anyway.
You know, I, I'm surprised that she didn't go to Obama, right? Like, thanks, Obama.
Well, but, uh, okay, I've got one more that I want to wrap up with, because we're, we're going a little long here, but, um, okay, this story really, really bothered me the other day, because, you know, I, I talk a lot about sentencing reform and, and I hate things like three strikes, you're out, because I think they're just, they're awful. But there was a guy in Pennsylvania the other day who was arrested and is now facing felony charges after he underpaid for a Mountain Dew by 43 cents. Now, here's the deal, there was a sign at this convenience store that said, "Mountain Dew, two for three bucks." The guy puts down $2 on the counter and takes one Mountain Dew. They called the cops on him because the single bottle cost was $2.29. So the man allegedly underpaid with taxes by 43 cents, because this is Pennsylvania, big tax on soda. So the guy underpaid by 43 cents, they called the cops on him, and the guy was arrested on August 23rd, he was jailed and given a $50,000 bond. Now, why? Because apparently this was his third theft charge that he's had. He's faced charges before, twice before. He drove away from a gas station without paying once, and he stole a pair of shoes from a Kmart once. So now this guy's facing three and a half to seven years in prison for a felony, because it doesn't matter the amount of the, of the theft, it's a third one, so it becomes an automatic felony charge. And the judge put a $50,000 bond on a guy who tried to pay for the Mountain Dew. He tried to pay for it, and he thought he was paying what was a fair amount, but the fact that the guy at the store called the cops on him in the first place, that guy's my schmuck of the week. The cop that actually arrested him is my second schmuck of the week, and the freaking judge that gave him $50,000 bond and the prosecutor that didn't realize that this was stupid are schmucks of the week as well. This is our justice system run amok. I know I've got a couple of defense attorneys here that would agree with me on this one.
Yeah, could it, could it be that Mountain Dew's a very precious drink in Pennsylvania?
You said what, Alan? What did you say?
I said, "Could it be that Mountain Dew's a very precious drink in Pennsylvania?"
Liquid gold.
No, it could just be that these people are just insensitive. I mean, this is where the country's going, we're always on these tangents, like, you know, Trump is just more of a manifestation of how we operate sometimes as Americans. We get on these tangents and we run with them, you know, so you're gonna take 43 cents? You said that earlier, and I just, I, I, I'm, I'm, I was baffled.
But, but the judge, the judge's name is Jacqueline Leister, uh, she's a magisterial district judge there, um, who gave the $50,000 bond. She said she, she told Penn Live, which is the thing, that she couldn't remember why she set the value of 50,000, but thought it might be because he had the two previous offenses and other factors, including that the dude is homeless.
Oh, so now, so now we got debtor's prison. That's what we're going, you know, so now, that, that's what we have, I mean...
The guy put down $2 that he probably scraped together to get, looking, "Hey, I'm overpaying by 50 cents for this, because it's two for three bucks."
I'm, I'm sure she's never been a John Steinbeck.
I mean, but that's just something that, yeah, I, I have a feeling that this guy's gonna be okay, but he doesn't have any counsel, so, you know, he's gotta get counsel appointed to him.
Absolutely.
But, but here's the thing...
Really, I'm serious.
I don't think he's even committed a crime, you know what I'm saying? Because...
I see a legal team right here.
You know, I, I, I just don't think he's put down money. What I think, what they've done is by advertising two for $3, and you know what it is, is a